I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Ray.
Here.
How do I answer this question, Mr. Doris?
Present.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
And Mr. Butler.
Here. Okay, so can we get approval of the minutes from the October 25th, 2022 meeting?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as written for the October
25th.
25th. 25th business, uh, planning commission meeting.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we're gonna go down to, uh, oral comments. Members of the public may be heard on any item of interest not on the agenda. Speakers addressing the commission will be limited to three minutes. For speaker, be advised that by law, the commission is not able to deliberate and take action on issues presented during oral comment. We have, um, we actually have Zoom, uh, tonight option. Um, I'm sure at some point we'll throw that information up there on the board for everybody can see it at home. I know we have people at home on Zoom right now. We have, uh, one of our planning commissioners on. So seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's start our first order of business. Public hearing consider approval for conditional use permit. Construct a 70-unit multifamily development in residential multifamily district. Kramer Properties is applicant. Project site is Smith Lane. Can we get a background on this again, please?
Yes, thank you, planning commissioners. And thank you for introducing the agenda item. Let me just get this started. Okay, so, um, so yeah, the project is construction of a new 70-unit multifamily development called The Orchards on a 2.7 acre parcel, um, just off of Smith Lane, um, 2.7 acre parcel. So you can see that I am sharing the vicinity map and, um, the project site is denoted in blue there. So, um, Smith Lane is to the south and the southeast and then, um, Ronneville Road is to the north and North Fortuna Boulevard is to the west. So it is, um, you know, in this triangle area. Um, this is a mix of multifamily and commercial. Um, you know, this is kind of a high-density area with, um, narrowly built out with multifamily developments and, um, you'll see that on further, further slides. And just to point out, you know, it's fairly close to Main Street, so, um, this is an infill development, um, you know, with regards to its location. Um, it is near services, um, Rona Park, you know, all the services on Main Street, grocery store, bus stops, um, Rona Park and Newburgh Park as well. So, um, yeah, there is a lot of, um, you know, activity and available, um, services and, um, recreation and things like that. So, um, this is the aerial close-up and, um, so you can see Smith Lane again now to the south and Ronneville Road over to the left. Um, so the entrance is off of Smith Lane. The property lau- property boundary is shown in blue, so it is, you know, it's basically a rectangle, but it also has some irregularity to it. Um, this is basically a, like a flag driveway giving access. Uh, there's development on both sides, actually you can see development on all sites, um, mostly multifamily and then there's some commercial over to the left, to the west off of Fortuna Boulevard. Um, the site itself is vacant and it's, it's fairly level, uh, you know, visually it looks level. There is a little bit of a slope and there are some drainage areas that I'll point out. Um, yeah, overall in the vegetation is, I guess, um, non-natives and, you know, weeds, grasses and weeds and shrubs and things like that. There was a biologist that did go to the site, um, and did characterize it that way and also identified some wetlands and I will, um, talk about those more bri- uh, more, um, in detail further on. Um, but, yeah, I would, I guess I would point out the newer development is, um, multifamily to the north, um, and then Hillside Creek comes into play on this project. It is mostly, you know, 99.9% off-site. It does run from Ronneville Road, um, and then crosses just a slight corner of the property and then continues on to Fortuna Boulevard. Um, there is a pedestrian trail that you can't see on, maybe that's it. There's, I think it's like a 10-foot paved pedestrian trail in a public easement that goes along the creek and then it joins, um, another public easement, um, on the driveway, the Les Schwab driveway. So, um, this project will create a connection to that and you can see that on the site plan. Um, the general plan land use designation is residential high. Um, you can see that there is, this is an area of, um, the RM is residential medium, so, you know, this is a multifamily dense area of the city and the pink to the left, that's, um, commercial mixed use, so it's basically all of the commercial activity along Fortuna Boulevard. And then let, you know, lower density residential uses, um, to the, to the north and northeast, that's in the, as, you know, the hillside part of town. And the density for this residential high is, um, up to 29 units per acre in the general plan. So for this project, the 2.7 acre parcel, it does allow up to 78 units and, you know, so they're getting close there with their 70 units. And then this shows the zoning residential multifamily, um, and, uh, mul- and obviously multifamily uses are allowed in that zone. They are principally permitted for up to five units and then six or more is conditionally permitted. So that's, um, the application that's before you denied is a conditional use permit to meet that requirement. So the site plan, um, pretty much, um, I guess I'll just start with the entrance off of Smith Lane. Um, there is a, you know, you can see the driveway at the entrance, it's a 26-foot, all of the widths, um, do meet the city standard, so 26 feet for basically a two-lane. Um, there's no parking on this section and you'll see, um, on other, other plans, um, both sides of that road are landscaped, so it's, it's a nice entry. The sidewalk is off to the right. That sidewalk does go through the site, um, you know, basically around the whole perimeter and behind the parking spaces. And then in the upper-left corner, um, it does go to, um, that pedestrian easement that I was talking about. And you can see Hillside Creek, um, in that northwest corner as well. So the nine multifamily units are located along the outside of the property with the, um, parking along the roadway in the center. Um, it does meet the requ- the standard, the Fortuna zoning standard for parking spaces, um, and that's based on the number of bedrooms, certain number of parking spaces per, um, you know, number of bedrooms per unit. Um, there is around the buildings, in the landscaped areas, um, it is 40% open space and that's basically the, um, all the area excluding parking, road and the buildings. Um, so anything not covered by those does count as open space. Um, let's see, along, um, into the roadway over towards the left, um, you can't quite see it on here, but there is a fire turnaround that's a little bit wider. I think it's 30, 30 to 35 feet and it's basically this, um, I guess a T shape. So as they come in, um, the width of that driveway allows the fire trucks to pull in and then do, I guess, a three-point turn to turn around. So that, they have reviewed that and the fire, fire district has, you know, worked with, uh, or the engineer has worked with the fire district to, um, create that turnaround that meets their needs. And that is a condition of approval. Um, we didn't get a written referral from the fire district, but they did work with it, the engineer. And, um, the condition is just that they, they will, as they always do, have reviewing, um, authority and, uh, basically, you know, signing, um, anything relating to the building permit. So they do have another opportunity to review for, um, and I'm sure they have looked at, um, you know, fire hydrant location and on the building permit plans, um, the additional item that they would review is the, the fire sprinklers for the buildings themselves. But they are definitely involved every step of the way. Um, and there will be easements for that fire turnaround or actually through the driveway for fire access. That's to ensure that that area be kept clear and available for their use. And then there will be a public utility easement to the city for water and sewer through that driveway and other utilities, PG&E and AT&amp;T. Um, and then that pedestrian easement, actually there won't be a need for a pedestrian easement, it's already existing, so they're just going to, this project will just make that paved connection through, um, that adjoining site. Um, okay, a couple of other things. Um, this project, um, does have, um, stormwater retention through, uh, for low, low impact development, um, features that are required, um, for all jurisdictions in the, in the county. Um, so the two, the two LID stormwater basins, the one is in the upper-left corner, it's kind of got the yellowish, um, boundary. And then, um, on the south side as well, so, um, all of the drainage on the site will be, you know, the site will be graded and sloped to direct, um, the stormwater into those LID basins that, which allows them to, you know, slow down and settle and get, and filter the runoff before, um, before it enters any, either storm drain pipe or in this case, Hillside Creek. Um, and then there are two protected wetlands that were identified on the site and those are in the lower-left corner and you can see, um, the wetland, the delineated wetland area is in the cross, um, hatched area. And then what you see adjoining that, that gap there and then a black line, that is a, um, a wetland setback. So, and actually there's more detail, uh, you know, I'm just, I, well, I have a couple of slides further on, but, um, the general plan does call for a 50-foot setback from wetlands and, and creeks. Um, it does allow for a reduction to be approved by the planning commission when, um, the policy says that, um, a report, um, you know, is to be submitted by a biologist that basically evaluates the wetland and then, um, finds, you know, if the reduced setback would not impair that wetland. And so, um, that was done for this, um, for these wetlands and I will, I'll explain those. Um, I'll show you, you know, the slides when we get there. So, let's see, I think I covered everything. Um, I will point out for the creek setback, um, the applicant is not asking for a reduction in that 50-foot setback, um, and you can see it, uh, there's a dashed line, um, that shows the 50-foot setback from, it's from the top of the bank of the creek. And the storm, the LID, the stormwater facilities under the Fortuna general plan are allowed to be located within that setback area. And now I'm gonna, I'm just gonna disclose all the details now because it makes sense to, but, um, we did, um, California Department of Fish and Wildlife did visit the site and city staff accompanied them and then, um, one of the applicant's agent was there as well, um, you know, looked at all of the, the wetlands and the setbacks, um, and the creek setback and, you know, um, basically agreed with the biologist's report that the, um, these two wetlands do warrant a reduced setback or, um, the wetlands won't be harmed, uh, basically because of the quality of the setback, um, the wetlands being isolated and, um, not, uh, not connected to any valuable wetlands. So, um, I think I covered all of the features. Um, it does meet the standards for this, the, just the property line setbacks, um, open space, parking, building height, things like that, all of the, the zoning standards. Um, so I will move on to the next slide. Oh, this one just shows, um, I guess the, the creek. Um, and you can kinda, can't really see that well and so wetlands are located in these two corners here. The trash enclosure, I can go back and show you the location of the trash enclosure. So it is right, basically in the center of the site, so I guess that's for, fairly easy access by everybody. Um, and, uh, the detail of the trash enclosure. Um, so it is a CMU block with a roof and the doors, um, and then there is a, a plan, a basically a little site plan that shows the, um, with the dimensions, um, I think it's 13 feet by 20 feet. And it does, this site plan does demonstrate that the, um, trash enclosure can accommodate two four-yard, um, bins, one for recyclables and one for, um, uh, trash. And then it does show that there are, um, you know, there's room for four 64-gallon compost totes, so that would, those would be, um, in order to accommodate organic, um, waste, food waste that is, um, required to be collected. Um, Humult County, I believe, is working together in a joint authority to implement, um, house, uh, organic waste collection and composting and I think they have been given a, I think a one-year extension. City manager is working on, on that. I'm not directly involved, but, um, so that's in process. And then, um, you know, when those bins are required, when, um, there's pickup for, um, you know, households or whoever's required to, to provide organic waste pickup, um, there is room in those, in the dumpster area, the enclosed, enclosure, to accommodate those. So, moving on. Um, so I've included the slides for the building elevations. You did, the planning commission did review and approve design review, that was back in August. Um, so, but as a refresher and kind of, you know, just to create a, a complete picture, I did include those, um, the building elevations here. Um, this is, I, uh, one of the larger buildings, I think this is an eight-unit, yeah, cause you can see four stairways. Um, so there's, um, the balconies for each of the units and then there are, there's private open space down below, so each of the units does have, um, some, you know, private open space. Um, and then, um, the front view of the buildings have dormers and, you know, you can see the, the trim and there's a, what is it, a belly band? Um, there's, it's a two-color, you know, uh, two colors of green, kind of, which is nice, it kind of breaks up, you know, there's a lot of features here that break up the, the mass of the buildings. Um, nice pitched roofs and you can see the side view as well at the, on the bottom there. And then the floor plan, this just kind of demonstrates, um, even there, out of the nine buildings, there are, I think there have, and they can correct me, like four, six and eight, um, unit buildings that you can see on the site plan. And then these floor plans kind of show, um, a couple of the two-bedroom units and then a one-bedroom unit. And then that community building, um, there's the, the elevations, the floor plan, um, when you see the yell, you know, some of these photos are, um, they're basically samples, but they do come from a project in, for, by this developer that's in Eureka. And so this is, uh, a similar type of development, so those can, you know, demonstrate the, the visuals for this project. And then same with, with these photographs, this was in your packet, um, you know, you can see the sign, the stairs, um, the siding, I think it's baton board, um, you know, it's, you can see the, you know, the variety and just the visual interest that's created by the, um, contrasting or the white si- um, trim. Um, there's plenty of landscaping, which I will show you the landscaping plan and there's the trash enclosure, you know, it's nice, it's got the, um, split face brick and, uh, wood overhang roof and then the metal, um, doors. And then this is just a 3D site plan. Um, the top view is, um, you can see the wetland area and then, um, the top left you can see the, um, the, oh, I didn't, I did not point that out. That is the, so it's at the end of the road and it's actually a, a second access, so it's an emergency access. Um, it's a con- it, the, the access road is really from, I guess it would be access from the Les Schwab driveway and it's, um, completed there on the adjoining property. So all three of those properties kind of work together to create, you know, this access, emergency access for each of those parcels. Um, and then down below is the entrance from Smith Lane, so you can see the landscaping at the entrance. Um, on this view, you can see the landscaping, um, they've, they're planting fruit trees, a mix of apple and cherry and plum, I think. Um, and then, you know, there's a variation of, um, bark ground cover and then lawn area, um, and then trees in the parking lot and then a couple on, on the sides there. And then there's a variety of shrubs that are detailed on the site plan. Okay, so here is the wetland delineation, um, that was done by the, by the biol- biologist. And you can see, um, in that southwest corner, the, it's, uh, let's see, it's around 2,472 square feet on this larger one and then the smaller one to the left is 400 square feet. And these are isolated wetlands that were created by runoff from the adjoining properties. It's been determined and, you know, Fish and Wildlife and Army Corps actually approved this, um, the delineation, so that has been reviewed by the regulatory agencies and they, um, you know, basically agree that these wetlands don't have any connectivity to any valuable wetlands. So they're isolated, they're created by the adjoining properties, um, but they are wetlands, so, you know, they fall under all of the, um, state and federal regulations. Um, and they are not connected to Hillside Creek at all. So that's, you know, that's part of the recommendation by the biologist because of those reasons that, um, you know, there is, the vegetation is, there's not any native or other kind of vegetation that's, you know, going to provide special habitat to any threatened, um, you know, animal or bird species. Um, so, um, that's, that's rec- the recommendation and again, um, you know, California Department of Fish and Wildlife basically agreed with that. Um, but, so they do need to be preserved and as conditions of approval, um, the, um, recommendations in the biologist's report, um, would be implemented and really they're just, um, measures to prevent, to protect the wetlands during construction, so that would be fencing, um, you know, with like probably the orange silk fence that you see on construction sites that would delineate those, um, to keep equipment out of them and, um, measures to prevent, um, soil and silk from going into the wetlands and then for, is, on an ongoing basis, um, uh, like a split rail fence, it's sort of a decorative fence, um, to delineate those wetlands, um, you know, during, um, you know, once the, um, the tenants live there, so to keep people out of them basically, but still be able to, you know, look at them, enjoy, you know, a little bit of open space there. Um, and then for, let's see, I guess that's it on the wetlands. And then these are the, okay, those are just the wetland setback, again, if you have any questions about those. Um, okay, so this is the landscaping plan and you did, um, you did approve it with a design review. This is, um, so this shows, you know, basically the, what, the ground cover, the, um, the bark ground cover and then the green lawn areas and there are, you know, um, the fruit trees that you can see around the perimeter. Um, the shrubs, you know, it's the typical, um, hardy, kind of low, low maintenance, low water demand, uh, shrubs, rhododendrons, lavender, rock rose, hydrangeas, irises and things like that. The couple of items that I wanted to bring up and propose a, um, a clarifying condition, I think. So for the two LID features, um, the landscaping legend calls for water retain- water retaining grasses, which is appropriate. Um, we would like to see a list of the plants of those grasses, um, before they plant them, um, just to make sure that they're, you know, either native or at least non-invasive. So, um, you know, I understand why they left it vague. One reason is because, um, you know, it's fine to identify plants on your landscaping plan, but then when you go to plant, when you go to the nursery, you can't necessarily find those varieties. So, um, I think it's a good thing to leave it vague and then when they do go to, um, you know, buy the plants, um, they can give us a list of, um, what they propose and may, and we'll just check and make sure that they're either native or non-invasive. And the same goes for the wetland area. Um, they, kind of the same thing, um, a wetland plant enhancement. So what we would do is just want to see the enhancement plan, um, before they plant and make sure that those are natives. They would also need to kind of run that plan by, um, Department of Fish and Wildlife, um, to, you know, just make sure that they're planting right and planting the right plants and not, you know, tearing up the wetland or whatever. So, um, we, I did add those as conditions approval and it's really just to, um, you know, get, have a little check off on those before, before they're actually installed. Um, and then lastly, I do want to point out, let's see, oh, okay, so, I was, these are the proposed conditions. So those two that I just mentioned, so, um, if you agree with them, then when you make the motion, um, these are the conditions that would be added. And the last one is, um, I did notice, as I was going over the, the packet, that the conditions of, the engineering conditions, um, he, the engineer picked up, uh, final map and, um, final map improve, you know, improvement plans, so, um, this is not a subdivision. A final map refers to subdivisions. It's a very similar process, um, you know, doing conditions for a use permit because he's dealing with utilities and roads and other types of infrastructure. Um, but just to make it cleaner, um, I would cha- request that the final map be changed to basically building permit, um, or, and, um, site plan instead of improvement plans or building site plan, something like that, just to, you know, it is a little bit confusing to read it and see all these references to, uh, subdivision map, so. Um, and that can just be done at a staff level and, um, you know, it would not affect any of the conditions, um, it would just change that, you know, erroneous reference. So with that, um, I'll hand that back to the planning commission and, and answering your questions, obviously they, the applicant and his agents are here.
Thank you. That's a whole bunch.
What's that?
Said, "Thank you, that's a whole bunch."
That was a lot, wasn't it?
Anybody have any questions for staff regarding this? Okay, comments, nothing? Okay, so hearing none, we're gonna open it to public comment. So members of the public be heard on this matter, um, via Zoom or via in-house. So members of the public be heard on this matter via Zoom or via in-house. You have no Zoom people, okay. Nobody's got a hand raised out there? Okay. So looking for a motion to close public comment.
I move to close public comment.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody have questions for the applicants that are sitting out here? I do have one, if you don't mind. With all the talk of PG&E and their problems and everything like that, we got a promissory note from them saying they're going to be able to, to do this?
Not yet. We're feeling, feeling like it could happen, but I was so far into this project when we started this.
I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Kirk, sorry, I'm, Kirk Kramer, the applicant, Kramer Investment Corp., Kramer Properties. Welcome a couple of new guys from the last time I was here. So we were, we were probably 80% of the way through the project when that kind of popped up and I was kind of like, what are we going to do? We've already got a substantial amount of investment in the plans and specifications to pull back. So I, I kind of just made a few calls, talked to a few folks, wasn't getting a lot of good information back. But, you know, after the weeks have gone by and now months have gone by, it feels like PG&E is coming up with some solutions for the, the infill projects in Fortuna. And that's about, you know, that's kind of the wing and the prayer we're on right now. So we'll be, once we get approval from you folks, get through this process, we'll be driving a, the first test will be temporary power. Can we even get that?
Right.
And then, and then from there, and we're going to, this project, if it goes anything like the one in Eureka did, it's going to take us a couple of years. We're going to start, you know, get all the infrastructure in place and then we'll start two or three buildings at a time. And then once those get to the completed stages, then the new foundations will start. And, and, you know, we've had, you know, the whole COVID experience and everything else trying to keep people on a job or keep subs showing up. And, you know, I don't know where that takes us. I do feel that things are slowing down right now, so our timing may be okay there. But I still think it's a multi-year project. So PG&E is not getting the demand of all of these units at one time. A, B, we're putting solar on these buildings that over, overcome a lot of the electrical demand. So I gotta look at that, I gotta think they look at that and go, that, that too would be, solves some of their concerns about capabilities. So I, I think we're okay, but I don't, I don't have a letter saying, we'll, we'll serve letter that we're good for, so.
Okay, and then the new conditions that were put on, you guys okay with that?
Yeah, I think, I was just checking with the engineer to make sure we're good. But I, I, I think we're, we've just, we've worked on this a lot with Liz and, and I think we're all in agreement that whatever's there, we can work around, work with.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I do have one more item briefly. We did receive cor, one item of correspondence this afternoon. And I'd just like to maybe read it into the record.
Okay.
Or at least part of it, I guess the main points. From Allison Souza to the planning commission, writing on the housing project on Smith Lane, I'd like to state that I object to the chosen location for said project. Would ask that the city consider approval of this project in a different Fortuna neighborhood. Resident for 12 years. There's been a disproportionate amount of large multifamily housing projects within the boundary of Fortuna Boulevard, Renoville Road and Newburg Road. Overcrowding has diminished the quality of the established neighborhood. Concerns for the future of this part of town. Construction of large complexes is an ideal business venture, but frequently these structures are not well maintained over time. There's a potential that in 30 to 40 years' time, there may be a degenerative neighborhood situation in the center of the city. And this is something that the city planning commission should be taking into consideration and that there are other large lots on the market that could support a project of this size, from Allison Souza.
Thank you. Okay, so hearing all that, I'm looking for a motion. And when we do, we need to add in the proposals.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number PC-2023-3097, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Fortuna approving the conditional use permit for construction of a 70-unit multifamily development, including the three additional proposed conditions.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. There you go. Congratulations. Okay, we're going to move on to our second. A public hearing to consider approval for conditional use permit for CRV recycling buyback. Apparent is Hambro Recycling. The project location is 591 Main Street. Can we get the background on this, please?
Okay, thank you, planning commissioners. So the applicant is proposing to operate a CRV, California Redemption Value Recycling and Buyback Center in the northwest part of the city. And that's, let's see, so that is shown on the overhead or on the slide. You can see the project is just south of Main Street. And it is just west of Sixth Street. And I'll have a close-up of that for you. Actually, here is a close-up. So this is the building. It's an existing mixed-use commercial building. Main Street is at the top and the road on the right side is actually a public road. The building, because this is an older building, you know, it's really close to the downtown area where buildings were, you know, typically they can have zero setbacks. In this case, yeah, they, the setback is right along Sixth Street there. And there are a couple of houses, actually, there's two houses to the east there on the other side of the road. And then, so that's Sixth Street. And then it turns to a small street called Oak Street that connects, that would then connect over to Fifth, Seventh Street. And then you can see it's kind of, I don't know, not really to standard the way Sixth Street does merge right into the parking lot. So everything around that building, so there is a setback here and that setback is the, the driving aisle. You can see it's one way off of Main Street and then, then it's got parking on both sides on that section that comes out onto Sixth Street. And so this is a mixed-use building. There are three small offices on the front. The interior is a motorcycle repair shop. And then the rear 20, 2,500 square foot area is proposed to be used by the CRV center. And that was previously used for a warehouse. And, and then more recently as a bottling, a water bottling facility. It was a CBD water bottling facility that operated there for a couple of years, I think. And then to the left, those are warehouses. And then to the right is the zone boundary between the commercial thoroughfare. And that's light industrial where you see that building to, just at the bottom. And that, the drive, Sixth Street does merge and go into, right into that parking lot as well. So that's the parking lot entry there. The parking spaces are actually on the adjoining property, but the CRV or this parcel has the right to use those through an easement. So it's extra parking that was created through an easement for the use of this building. So the operations of the facility, I don't know, maybe I'll go to the zoning real quickly here. You can see the zoning, the pink is the commercial thoroughfare. And then just to the east is the downtown retail commercial zone. And then directly to the left, adjoining that property is, you know, a large area of light industrial. So this is the site plan. And so the operations will be that there will be scales on the site. All of the operations will be at the south end of this, the south end of the building, so away from Main Street. So there will be scales and equipment to weigh and process the drop-offs. There's a Hambro, the business name is Hambro, and they will inspect the material, weigh it and do the CRV payout and then store CRV material on a parked truck. And then that truck will go back to Arcata, the main, their main facility in Arcata and, and drop the cans off or the materials off. Occasionally, they will, they may need to leave the materials on the site, you know, if they aren't able to go back to Arcata. And they will store everything inside that warehouse, what was a warehouse. So the hours of operation are limited through, pretty much everything here is a condition of approval. So their operations, so they'd be open to the public Wednesday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. They expect 50 to 60 customers per day. Service time of 10 to 15 minutes per customer. So customers, you know, they might pre-sort at home and then bring their materials or they can use the bins located under an awning. So at the bay door, there's a bay door on the end of that building. And then that would be, you know, connected or they would connect an awning to that. And that's where the operations, that's where the public would drop their items off. They would have a kiosk just inside that building and that would be, you know, for services for, for payment and things like that. And there would be no crushing or bailing activities taking place on site. It would just be, you know, drop off and then being taken away. Two employees, at least two. And I did want to make a correction to the conditions of approval where it says that at least one employee would be on site. But they, they have said and they want it to be a condition that there would be at least two on site and possibly more, especially in the beginning and especially on Saturdays when, when it might be a little bit busier. And so the, you know, the extra staff would manage the flow of customers. So they would enter at, off of Main Street. The parking, they do have 13 parking spaces for their use. And that is calculating from the Fortuna's municipal code, the parking demand for the offices and for the motorcycle repair shop. So that leaves the facility with 13 parking spaces, which, you know, if they average eight customers per hour, then there would be enough parking. There would also probably be a couple of cars that stop at the, you know, at the drop-off place. And there is enough, there's 26 feet distance between, you know, for the driving aisle there, so there actually would be room. This is not a two-way driving aisle. So they would be able to park, you know, two or three cars there on the left side of that driving aisle and still have room for cars to drive out. So the condition, going over the conditions of approval and talking about the concerns, the police chief reviewed the project and he did have some conditions and those have been added in. Oh, I would show a couple more slides. This is the view from Sixth Street. And you can see the parking stalls here. So for screening of the activities, the drop-off activities, this is where the awning would be. And then they are also going to install a fence along this property line that would create a more clear boundary between the, the site and the, and the public road, which I think is a really good thing. And also it would be a solid fence, well, it would be a chain link fence with slats. So that would create, you know, a, a visual barrier or screening from the, from the activities. They don't have any need to use the bay door that's on Sixth Street. But they, you know, there's no prohibition from using it. So they may, you know, they may on occasion, but typically would not use it. You know, the older parts of town, there are delivery trucks that do park in the street. And, you know, this is kind of one of the situations where that's historically taken place. Sixth Street doesn't have a lot of traffic, but, you know, does have some. And then there's the two residences to the right as well. The city engineer is one of those, the one of the engineering conditions is that this be designated as a no parking zone. The road is slightly narrow. I mean, it's more narrow than a, a modern public, public roadway. So, you know, the idea is just to prohibit the customers from parking here and dropping things off. Let's see. And then down, you know, downward or shielded lighting. So the previous slide, these yellow markers show where the lighting fixtures would be placed and also where cameras. So each of those, there would be two cameras, security cameras that would, you know, be directed into the parking lot. So the police department did ask for, you know, they're requiring no loitering signs. Those no loitering signs would be approved, the language would be approved by the chief of police prior to them getting posted. Surveillance cameras, those are as shown. Oh, directions to be posted to identify, so there would be directional signs for the, for the cars and for the non-vehicular, so for pedestrians. So there will be, you know, indications, so for walk-ups, how to maneuver through the line if that's necessary, if there is a line of cars. And then the hours of operation shall be fixed and, or should not be changed unless approved by the chief of police. So it would be limited to those hours, Wednesday through Saturday, six to, or I'm sorry, nine to, nine to five. And then city engineer conditions. And again, these are basically, you know, the chief, the police conditions and the city engineer conditions, you know, really geared towards public safety and neighborhood, you know, compatibility. So the no parking signs along that west side of the street, the loading zone, marking the loading zone yellow in compliance with Fortuna Municipal Code. Customer traffic operations monitored to ensure the proposed ingress-segress pattern as shown on the proof site plan are followed. Applicant is responsible for the placement of signage or striping that may be required to achieve the intended traffic flow. And should there be any adverse impacts to safety access or operations, additional measures or analysis may be required by the city engineering department. So really this gives the city engineer, you know, just the ability to monitor and then to require any changes, you know, adjustments to respond to any needs, any issues that come up as far as the traffic flow. And then keeping the site clean, keeping trash out of the storm drain. If there are any issues, applicant will be required to mitigate the situation per the direction of the city engineer. So again, that gives the authority. You know, this use permit is contingent on, you know, the ongoing inspections and maintenance by, by city staff. And, you know, remedial actions taken if necessary. And then the planning department conditions, I'll just call them out briefly. Parking and loading and unloading, maintaining the site clean on a daily basis. No outdoor storage of materials would need to be screened. Lighting, signed permit. Oh, any household trash that's incidentally collected will be disposed of with the local solid waste provider. Hours of operation, reiterating those previously stated. Storing materials, either transporting them to Arcata or storing them inside. At least one attendant present on, that's onsite at all times. And I would change that to two attendants, at least two. And then, yeah, basically, this is the, the safe traffic operations that the city engineer has included. Okay, oh, this, oh, I'm sorry, this is the previous, okay. So conditional use is required by the Fortuna Municipal Code for this type of a use. The general plan land use designation is commercial. And the zoning is commercial thoroughfare. Light service industries are listed as a conditional use. And the planning commission can make the determination that a use is compatible or similar to the listed conditional uses. Project referrals were sent out, and no written ones other than city staff, the ones that, the conditions I described were received. I do have a certificate from CalRecycle. So CalRecycle is the state agency that is in charge of recycling centers like this. And they did provide a, it's like a conditional certificate that would take effect upon city approval. So just wanted to point that out. And then I will pass it back to the planning commission.
Okay, any questions, comments for staff?
I'm sorry, did you say there was no public comment written in?
Right. Let me read it again. No.
We did have one visit to City Hall and some discussions.
And just so I'm correct, it's 300 feet or is it 600 feet?
It's 300.
Okay.
It was noticed three times because it got moved.
Yeah, okay.
It was, it was to appear three separate times, so we should.
Okay, I thought it was. So they should be well aware at this point, because, okay.
Anybody else, questions for staff? Okay, gonna open up for public comment. Anybody out there that have something to say about it?
I have no hands for the Zoom.
No hands up out there?
We do have the applicant on Zoom available to answer any questions.
Okay. Hear nothing, looking for motion to close public comment.
I motion to close public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody else got any comments about this?
I do have a question for the applicant, if they're, they can hear me.
It looks like he's on.
Okay. I was just concerned, a little concerned about the possibility of things such as shopping carts or other uses of transportation for the CRV. Recyclables, is there gonna, is there a concern on your end regarding this sort of thing? With people leaving behind that type of trash? I remember there was a notification saying that all trash would be removed, things of that. But larger bulky items such as shopping carts, you know, child strollers, wagons, things like that. Is that a concern?
We can't hear you.
I think you're on mute.
Sir, we can't hear you. Nope, still can't hear you.
It's not muted.
How about now?
There we go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so shopping carts would be considered part of our cleanup every day, you know, and we'll, we will encourage the folks to not bring the shopping carts. We in Crescent City and Arcata both tell those folks they're not going to be welcomed if they come with carts. So, but we will clean those up, we'll return them to the stores. Anything else that's left, we'll go in the dumpster and be dealt with. You, you, you know, at the end of the day, you won't even know we were there.
It's during the day, I got issues with, be honest with you. So my, my issues are just that, I've been, my background is I've been in the garbage and recycling business just about all my life, about 30-plus years. And running multiple recycling centers. From what I'm seeing and hearing, I don't see a whole lot of, I just don't see it, your business plan working very well. Send 30 to 60 people a day. We've had, running a recycling center here in Fortuna for almost 20 years. We get that in an hour. With no hesitation, I can say that. So having one to two people on hand, we've, most of the time, we've had at least two to four. This includes our Redway operations, our Smith Lane, or one over in here in Fortuna. I, I see a lot of issues coming down the road with, looking at this. And the location that you've chosen, in my opinion, is not the greatest. It's being that close to Main Street, with all the other issues of homelessness and, like you said, the, everything else that comes along with having a buyback center. It just looks like more problems. The neighbors right across the street, I mean, literally, what, 20 feet away, their front door. Just makes, to me, just seems to be like one of the, an issue. Why they're not sitting in this room is amazing to me right now. I would be in here screaming if that was my front door. But I'm just one vote here today.
But we, we had planned on, well, we planned on staffing up beyond the two, if needed. In the beginning, we, that's how we opened up Arcata. Everybody told us we were gonna plug up South G Street, maybe all the way back to 101. And we had enough staff and enough people on board with traffic control training that we, we never once backed up anybody. And, you know, the thing is to get them in and get them out. And we, we, we figure that that's about what it's gonna be. It'll probably be a lot more in the beginning, and we're gonna be prepared for it.
Anybody else have any comments, questions for? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're looking for, I guess, a motion.
I motion to adopt resolution number P dash 2023 dash 3098. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Fortuna approving a conditional use permit for a CRV recycling and buyback center.
Second.
We will call both, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Doris.
Yes.
Commissioner Canny.
Yes.
Commissioner Wobbling.
No. Is Stephanie out there?
She hasn't walked in.
No.
So to, to the Hambro representatives, we'll, we'll contact you, you know, during the rest of the week to get you the, the resolution and answer any questions that you might have about the rest of the process. Did you have any questions now?
The only one I have is, did you repeat what you said? You would give, give a context about a favorable resolution?
Oh, the signed resolution. So it did pass by majority, three to one was the vote. So that's an approval. And just wanted to let you know that we'll follow up and get the signed resolution to you. And then answer any questions you might have about the process.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, looking for staff communication. It's been a long time since we talked.
It has, and, yeah, we've, glad to get these projects before you. We do have a couple coming up, well, one in particular that we're working on. And then I think maybe I have described to you that we're really excited about the activities for the mill site. There is a, a, a couple of folks who did purchase the, the entire site. So, yeah, so we're working with them on, you know, we've already undertaken the Mills, Mill District specific plan when that came along. So we've, you know, we're working with them on coming up with a specific plan that, you know, lays out the, the land uses that they need, but also that, you know, is, is good for the city and the infrastructure. So the road network and, you know, trails. Also, the great Redwood Trail people now are contacting the city, or all the cities. They're working to develop a master plan, so that's involved. The interchanges, the city is doing like pre-design for the interchanges. And that will help get funding for, you know, as they move along with more detailed plans and then construction. So that's part of the overall mill, you know, mill site development. Yeah, and just, you know, getting, getting some businesses and some jobs in there in a way that, you know, is gonna be, you know, have good planning, create some, a little bit of, some connectivity between like Newburgh and Fortuna Boulevard through the site, get, get water and sewer in there, and get storm drainage. A lot of that planning is going to help Spring Street. It's kind of a little bit of, you know, landlocked as far as infrastructure goes. They have storm drainage issues that kind of inhibits development of some of the vacant parcels in there. So that's going to be part of the planning. And we expect to get something, you know, during this year. Actually, we need to, because we have planning grants that have that as a deadline. So that's kind of a good motivator. But also, you know, we're doing this to work with a developer. And they're, they are really good to work with. Think they're gonna be a really good representative and good, you know, owner and developer of that site. So we're really excited.
What kind of things are we looking for there?
They're pretty strong, commercial. They want to keep it somewhat flexible, so that they can respond to needs. And then some, so like have a little bit heavier industrial, commercial, light industrial in the interior, and then some more retail or, you know, so like public and pedestrian, things that respond to the pedestrian and the, and the vehicle traffic along Newburgh Road. And then also at the entrance off of Fortuna Boulevard, which is kind of by, well, it's by Hot Brew. So there's actually an existing 50-foot, 50-foot easement already there that's intended to serve the site. So that's where, kind of an extension of that little Hot Brew shopping center, you know, as far as, you know, demand allows. And then, you know, the further way you get from Fortuna Boulevard into the interior would be more commercial and light industrial. And then some consideration of the Strong's Creek, where it crosses the middle of the site on the nor, on the south end. So they're actually looking at 100-foot setback, you know, instead of the normal 50-foot setback, because they want to see that preserved. And part of the John Campbell Memorial Trail would go through there, also connect to the Great Redwood Trail. And then that John Campbell Trail would actually, can extend all the way to the Riverwalk area. So, you know, there'll be a lot of activity there, a lot of recreational opportunities. And then they are studying the floodplain along Strong's Creek to better identify it and then make modifications to, you know, see where they can develop. Where does the floodplain really exist? And where can they, you know, just kind of clarify what the building opportunities are in that area? So, um, yeah, where it's really a fun, exciting project and.
How many, how many acres is that?
The mill site is 75 acres.
Oh.
And I would say they can probably develop about two-thirds of it. They're looking at a million square feet of commercial development. Which sounds really high. But that's what, that's kind of what we're working on now is, you know, identifying that square, the square footage, the potential square footage. And then also, we have to go back and look at the environmental impact report for the general plan, which has its own square footage calculation. And so we might need to also do like a general plan amendment if we want to increase it that high. But that's what we're, that's what we're working towards. But just, right now, we're studying those kinds of things and then kind of outlining what our, what are our steps really going to be as far as environmental review and general plan amendments, if any. So we've got kind of some options for keeping it, you know, and we're definitely responding to what his, you know, his needs are as far as, does he want to follow the general plan, which has some limitations on the square footage, or open it up, amend the general plan, which has some greater environmental review requirements? So, but well, either way, that's something that the planning commission will be seeing, you know, this year. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions?
I do, I got one. With all the earthquakes we get and all the other stuff going on, do we have an emergency action plan, just in case, like if it got real catastrophic? Stuff going on?
Well, the countywide, there is a hazard mitigation plan. I don't think it details the, you know, the responses of the departments for each of those. I think it's more of like a land use, identifying the hazards, and identifying the areas where they're at. But, no, definitely, that's something that the police chief is talking about. And I know that Sheriff Hansel, I've heard him talk about that as well. You know, it's been said that this was a really good practice for what they need to do and where they're, you know, where they don't have a clear plan. I mean, all of the responders obviously were really responsive and out there. You know, if the hazard, if the earthquake or whatever hazard is, is even bigger than that, you know, it might be more challenging for them to respond, so.
What I'm looking at is that I know, almost 20 years ago, I put one together for us. Because we had to have something, you know, when, if we can't use the transfer station, all the garbage coming in, all the stuff coming, you know, the, the material coming in still. You know, what would we do? Where would we go? If I can't get the trucks out, that kind of thing. Communication-wise, what can we do? All that kind of thing, keeping people working. Where do I go to find people to work? When, you know, the driver's trying to take care of his own issues at home? Where, what are we gonna do? And I put it all together a long time ago. And, and like you said, this was kind of an eye-opener, again, a good practice run on what needs to happen again. You know, all the communication that needs to go on between everybody. And who do you call, and where do you call them? How do you get people on the phone when there's nothing going on? You know, you can't, you can't do it. So there's other emergencies happening.
Yeah, that next level.
Yeah. So that's why, that was the reason I was asking, to see how, how it went. And I just, they, the only, and the reason I put. I just, they, and the reason I pulled it up is I had it, it was still in my computer, and I actually saw it today, and I went, hey, good idea, let's pull this up. And looking at how we did it, you know, back then, it never worked today. So having to redo everything.
Yeah.
I have something maybe outside of purview of the planning commission, but there's, we, we live in the same neighborhood, and you go by the back of Hunon Restaurant every day, and the two landscape pods are in serious neglect, and the one in the front has been used for a toilet so bad, it smells like a sewer when I walk my dog by it every day. If something needs to be done.
Yeah, that's definitely something we can put on our nuisance abatement. We have a pretty good system now where, you know, reports get submitted either by staff or by the public, and the flow is very good. And our, Wayne Hanson is actually our, you know, on-the-ground code enforcement officer, and he's ex-police, you know, sheriff, and very, very good. So I, yeah, we'll definitely submit that.
Okay.
Yep.
That'd make me happy.
That's a good, that's a good call.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, looking for a motion to close.
Make a motion to close.
All agree?
Aye.
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 Thanks.